Okay, can everybody take their seats till we get started? Two more minutes, you got more people coming. Okay. It should take about two minutes to get started to sit down. We'll take care of the other business after the meeting's over with. We have a time limit that we have to adhere to, that I want to adhere to tonight. Okay, we're gonna get started. Um, I don't know, maybe it was the weather or... Pardon? I know. I talked to, uh, the custodian, she told me that the timer is off a little bit. Uh, could be because it is getting darker quicker. But anyway, you guys are here and I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you guys for coming out today. Uh, taking time out to hear what's going on and to, um, ask questions, try to be as informed, be informed as possible and, um, try to interact with one another. Um, I do wanna say a couple of things before we get started with the question meeting. Uh, it was brought to my attention yesterday at the village hall meeting that the meetings that I were having, town hall meetings, uh, one of them violated, or so-called violated the open meetings act because other trustees or board members were present. To that comment, I stated that this is an informative meeting. We're not conducting village business. We may talk about what's going on in the village, which is perfectly okay, but we're not conducting, we're not voting, we're merely discussing. So, there could be, yes, Dr. Lee.
I just wanna add to that, just so people know, open meeting that if you have, um, at least if you have three of your trustees in attendance, if they are actively discussing together business of the village, then you violate. But if you are not actively discussing with at least two other trustees, then you have not violated open meetings act. So, it's just because the rules are the same for school boards. So, if my board is, if I have three of them together in a room, they can be there, but if they get together at a table, start talking more business, then we violate. So, just as an additional support.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Lee. Um, she's the school superintendent, in case everyone knows, she is the school superintendent. But I did get a copy from the office of the attorney general, a letter stating this, and it's ironic, but this was filed or was brought to their attention by our village clerk. She filed the injunction to the office of the attorney general. Now, whether or not she knew what she was doing, because what she did, she said the board. So, basically, she's saying that the board was in violation because one person cannot be in violation. So, basically, she implemented her mayor and another trustee, whoever was there. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's, with things like that happening, I don't know about you, but it makes me more determined to do what I'm doing, makes me more determined to get the word out to the people, makes me more determined, 'cause obviously I must be know something, right? Because if you have that much time to write a letter to the attorney general against the board in the village that you represent, you really must be, must be, you know, it really must be sad. Okay, with that said, um, tonight, we wanna, I wanna basically answer questions, I wanna give you an update of what happened with the, uh, over the weekend and what's going on, and if you have questions about that or any other questions, it's gonna be open mind tonight. It'll be your break on whatever you wanna break up, if we can answer, if I can answer, I will. If not, I will definitely get back with you. Um, the lighting situation, giving an update, is actually ongoing. There, I don't know if you see crews out there, but there were crews, there are crews out there now fixing the lights. It was on, it's being done on the weekend lately because they still have things to do during the week. If you were at the board meeting, not last night, but night, uh, week before, I had a presentation, at least I started out with a presentation about the fire hydrants, and I wanted the public works and the fire chief to explain to the residents, um, and, and basically let them know what was going on. Well, that didn't happen, but I can still give you a summary. Um, we're gonna be purchasing fire, fire hydrants. I wanted to get the fire hydrants purchased with the water money, which is what it should be purchased with, and, um, have them on hand and as we have time, or as the public works has time to get them fixed. Um, that is happening, I talked to Kevin yesterday, and they, um, have ten fire hydrants in stock right now, so they're gonna try to start putting those in, in the worst areas, quite naturally, they go from there, purchase them as we go. The money for the fire hydrant has not came in yet. Um, that was supposed to be a grant, and that's one thing about it, grants are, if you invest, um, they can tell you that they're gonna have them, but when you get ready, the need, the need that money was not there, that's why I wanted to bring it before. The board at the time, we let them know, you know, when that runs out, let's purchase it, but then when we get the grant money, just pay that back. That's the proper way to pay grant money back, something that's related to that particular project. A lot of people don't know, the governor came out Saturday at 3:30, came to the village, um, to the village hall, and he spoke, and he gave South Village 4.8 million dollars, grant, and I emphasize again, grant. Now, that grant is supposed to be a clean water initiative. Now, we can use the money for anything dealing with the water. What is gonna be used with it, right now, I'm not, I'm clueless, I'm not in the loop, I don't know what, even though I'm a trustee, I don't know what is, well, I've heard rumors, I don't spread rumors, I spread fact. As a fact, right now, I don't know what's gonna be used, what that money's gonna be used for, but I know it's 4.8 million dollars, I've heard speculation that maybe used to pay off this and pay that off, but, you know, um, only thing I can tell you is, we haven't gotten the grant yet. You know, it's, it's, it's supposed to be here, this is the politi, this is the political season, election is next month, there's a lot of money being spread, and then going around the south suburbs. That particular amount is the largest amount given to any city in the state of Illinois. Think about that. That's the largest amount being given to any city. I appreciate that he said this, but I'll wait and see until we get the money. When we get the money, then I can jump up and down, then we can figure out what we're gonna do with it, but right now, I wanna see the money first. So, we'll see what happens come November 5th, 4th is the election. Now, after that, uh, we, we, we did talk last, uh, time about, um, Lake Michigan water. I wasn't understanding that the mayor came to one of the churches and mentioned that we are going to get Lake Michigan water, okay? You voted for it, it was put in a referendum and it was passed by the majority of the village, but I'm just gonna give you my opinion, and it's just my opinion, this personal opinion. You paid close to 4.2 million dollars right now for airstrippers, iron-out systems, pumps, and infrastructure for the pump houses. You borrowed 5.2 billion. Right now, if you pay that debt off with the money that you're gonna get for a grant, now you gotta go back out and borrow again. Where are you gonna have money and revenue saved to go out and borrow if you get Lake Michigan water? If you get Lake Michigan water, you have to take care of the infrastructure. You've already, you're no longer a emergen, this is no longer than an emergency entity for the water because you actually took care of that emergency part, which was the Mound Chloride, so you did take care of that. So, now you, you have to go back and tell them, okay, we want from IDNR allocation to get it. At one time, we were at the top of the heap, now it's down because we did take care of it. So, only thing I can tell you is, it may, it should happen, it's supposed to happen, but if you were definitely trying to do it, you would have diverted your money to doing those things, take care of the infrastructure, buy the land that you need to buy the car to connect, get the pumps, get the pipes, and then negotiate with whoever we're gonna try to negotiate with to try to get the hookup. Those would be the steps that you would take if you were actively trying to get Lake Michigan water. None of those steps have been taken, only thing that was been taken is what the government told us we had to take care of, and that's get rid of Mound Chloride. So, only thing I can tell you is, that's what's happening right now, that's a fact. We spent right now, close to 4.2 million dollars to get those things done out of 5.2. So, without further ado, is anyone, first of all, I wanna, I want to, uh, thank Dr. Lee, she's in attendance this night for us letting us use the, um, facilities here, District 168 in Rickel. Would you guys please give me that, help me get a round hand, appreciate it. We're gonna move it around, we're gonna try to find another, we're gonna find another location for the next one. So, on your way out today, I just need to have your phone number and your name so I can personally call you to let you know where the next one is going to be. I have a couple of places in mind, but until I get a definite, I don't wanna just say we may or may not, until I get a definite, uh, I wanna be able to call each and every one of you so you can come to the next town hall meeting, which will be the next third Wednesday, as we did this time, third Wednesday of the month of November, so be, uh, roughly the week before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I don't wanna have anything closer to Thanksgiving time. So, is anyone wanting to start off, who would like to start first, I'm asking? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk to you, I don't know why I didn't do it, but, Dr. Gosh, you're special, I'm just gonna walk to you. This is Bernie, no, I'm gonna let you.
Hi, I'm Bernice, and I've been in the village for fourteen years. Now, I have a couple of questions before I start, uh, on the board attention, but nevertheless, can you tell me what happened to the $48,000 they took out of the, uh, cell tower fund back in October 2013? It was promised to be put back when the property tax come in, but apparently it's not there yet, so can you tell me what happened to that money? Uh, can you also tell me what happened to the $65,000 that we're supposed to get for the pipeline, as I understand? They sold land for the pipeline, I'm not quite sure about that, but they told me about that. And also, uh, uh, the $254,000 that should be in the CNN fund, where residents went up there to get applications, and they said no applications were available, but those, the money's there, so I wanna know why that money can't get to the residents, okay? I said, I said a few questions, okay? I know. No. We don't do that. So, anyway, uh, especially, I don't know, how come the application's not available for those, uh, residents in Carlisle and, uh, and those people live, uh, near railroad tracks? And lastly, I don't know, wanna answer those questions before I get off the board?
Yeah. Okay. The first one was the...
The $48,000?
$48,000 for the cell tower?
Yeah.
Not existed, did not get put back.
Okay, so they spent...
There's no money in the cell tower.
Okay.
$63,000 deal that's not gone through yet. That's the one I was trying to ask, that we establish a program, a 50/50 program for sidewalks. I was asked if we take that money, once we get it, and set it aside for that reason, and probably put $10,000 a year into, or make available $10,000 a year to residents to match those that wanted to get their sidewalks fixed. I don't know how much it would be, it probably would be less than a grand per, per house, unless you have a lawn, unless you have a wide, um, property, and, um, then the village would match that until that level was first come, first served. Once that $10,000 is gone, then we have to wait till next year if you wanna do with the batch program. But as your question stated, no, that money has not got here yet, that's what I wanted to do with it, I was told that, no, we're gonna take that and pay bills, okay? What's the other one? The 200, okay, it's 272,000. It's in, that's in there, um, you were right, there was people, there were people that I had actually, um, asked to go up to the village hall, they had not, we were supposed to come up with an application back when we got that money. It was stated that we were supposed to come up with qualifications and the criteria for people that wanted to apply, and you're absolutely right, people in Carolina states, especially because they back up right to the railroad, were, were supposed to apply for that. Since then, um, let's say within the last week or so, we had our engineers come up, and, um, now I think they're in the final stages of putting the application together so people can come up and apply for that money to get, it, there's gonna be a limit, quite naturally, we're not gonna fix the whole house, but there's gonna be a limit, and there's certain qualifications that you have, in other words, you have to meet. They won't go for, they'll go for things like windows or something that's going to take, keep the sound out of the house. There was somebody that suggested foliage, foliage is fine, but you have to take care of that.
Do you know the application's gonna be available?
The application should be available before the end of the month, because I was talking to Jim Zama yesterday, and he's in the final stages of having that. And what's the last question?
Uh, well, the last question is, I want to give you a info about the fire hydrants. Now, uh, we had three hours meeting, uh, with, uh, with the mayor about the fire hydrants, and that was, we started like September last year, and the same ten fire hydrants are sitting in the fire, uh, station, they were there, he told us six of them were fixed, uh, and, uh, the public works at that time told me they didn't have time to do it, so my question is you, is the weather's changing, they still don't have time to do it, we, we, the fund is supposed to be there, whether out of the water fund, so they have stayed for a whole year about fixing these fire hydrants. Now, I talked to Dr. Lee, and she said that all the fire hydrants at the school, all the school grounds are working, so I made sure of that, but the fire hydrants around the areas and stuff, we don't know if they're working. And, uh, the mayor sat here last week and said they're working, and they got funds, nothing's gonna be done by those fire hydrants, this stuff has been going on for less than nine, since the nineties that I do, and nobody's actually fixing these fire hydrants, even though we have the funds. So, uh, I don't, you know, know why they do everything, but everybody's getting the same information, but nothing's being done for the fire hydrants.
Okay, the fire hydrants, just so you know, um, if you see a fire hydrant that has a cap on it that's a different color, I think it's white, that they told me, that fire hydrant is out of order. The mayor just instructed, um, public works, not at this meeting, but at another meeting, to start with the fire hydrants and start doing that right after they get through with the lighting. As a matter of fact, I talked to Kevin Friday, and he said that the lighting is almost done, and his, his priority now is to the fire hydrants. We have ten, he said he wants to put those in, he technically can do two a Saturday. So, he wants to put those in, and you're right, it's getting colder out there now, so they're gonna work until they get to the point where it's gonna freeze, but he said he's gonna devote the Saturdays for the fire hydrants.
And my, my last thing I wanted to talk about is water, and I'm gonna try to keep it short, 'cause, you know, water is my passion, but, uh, uh, this weekend, Quinn came in and gave us the money. Now, the South Village Citizens for Public Awareness made an outright effort to get the water referendum through when it was passed. Now, at that time, back in 2008, we told the people of South Village that the quality of water will not change, you're gonna be carrying twice as much contaminated water, and you can get this, these grants from federal, from the federal government, which we should have because well pre-passed it, uh, exceeded the federal standard. We all knew that, we told South Village that. South Village and Illinois EPA, uh, decided, you know, ignore us, you know, forget what we're saying. But the point I'm trying to make is, we borrowed 4.2 million, they knew the residents didn't have to pay for that, now they're giving us 40, 4.8 million for a rent, seems like somebody covered up something, somebody dropped the ball here. So, what I'm saying is, this money's gonna be offset with each other, and we're gonna be right where we started in 2008, trying to get us clean water. How is that any progress for this village?
Okay, I hope everybody understands what she's saying, because what she's saying is true, and what she's saying is makes a lot of sense, 'cause my question was this, back in 2012, when we had the crisis, we went to the government and told them that, well, I'm sorry, getting those, but they came out here and told us that our wells have to be shut down. We told them we didn't have the money to do the things that we did, that we had to actually borrow the money or whatever, where were they then? How come they couldn't do this then? All they think they could do was give us the IEP guarantee, low interest loan, loan at that time. How come we couldn't get X amount of money to fix that particular problem at that time, which was a health problem? Now, after we have spent X amount of money, through the low interest loan, it's gonna cost us about 200 and some thousand, 237, something like that, every year to pay this loan back for the next 20 years, now the breakfast that we come out, or they come out with a $4.8 million, uh, grant, you exactly, you're absolutely right, you're back to where you were, but things, the only thing you're gonna change would be an iron-out system, pumps, and some other minor equipment for each of the houses and a pad, and a permanent airstrip, permanent airstrip, and that's what you're changing. Your water taste will still be the same, but you didn't change the water. So, but you voted, I didn't wanna get into it because, you know, that's a tricky situation because she's right, again, that's gonna cost you even more money, seven dollars, fifty-seven for a thousand is basically dropping a bucket what we have to do, but I did read on, in media, that surrounding company, I'm sorry, surrounding cities were arguing, one of them being Calumet City, were arguing about their rates that's gonna go from $2,040, say, to $4,000 a thousand, and we're paying seven in the actual water, or Lake Michigan water. So, yes, that's happening. Calumet City is up in the harshest because the mayor wants to double the rates, reason being because the water from there comes from Harvey, and as we all know what happened with Harvey, um, you know, they, they're behind in their, in their bill to Lake Michigan to Chicago, so they had to raise their rates to get the money, and everything triples now. But they're paying $2, I think, 20 cents per thousand, right now you're paying $7, and you don't have Lake Michigan water. So, these are some of the things that, and, um, no curios, I, I, I understand, and she's a hundred percent right, why I did, why do we have to go that way? I'm one person, I can only do so much.
Now, uh, we had three hours meeting, uh, with, uh, with the mayor about the fire hydrants, and that was, we started like September last year. And the same ten fire hydrants are sitting in the fire, uh, station, they were there. He told us six of them were fixed, uh, and, uh, Public Works at that time told me they didn't have time to do it. So my question is you, is the weather's changing? They still don't have time to do it. We, we, the fund is supposed to be there, whether out of the water fund. So they have stayed here for a whole year about fixing these fire hydrants. Now, I talked to Dr. Leece, and she said that all the fire hydrants at the school, all the schools around are working. So I made sure of that. But the fire hydrants around the areas and stuff, we don't know if they're working. And, uh, the mayor sat here last week and said they're working, and they got funds. Nothing's gonna be done by those fire hydrants. This stuff has been going on for less than ninety, since the nineties that I do it, and nobody's actually fixing these fire hydrants, even though we have the funds. So, uh, I don't, you know, know why they put everything on, but everybody's getting the same information, but nothing's being done from fire hydrants.
Okay, the fire hydrants, just so you know, um, if you see a fire hydrant that has a cap on it that's a different color, I think it's white, that they told me, that fire hydrant is out of order. The mayor just instructed, um, Public Works, not at this meeting, but at another meeting, to start with the fire hydrants and start doing that right after they get through with the lighting. As a matter of fact, I talked to Kevin Friday, and he said that the lighting is almost done, and his priority now is to the fire. We have ten, he said he wants to put those in, he technically can do two a Saturday. So he wants to put those in, and you're right, it's getting colder out there now, so. They're gonna work until they get to the point where it's gonna freeze, but he said he's gonna devote the Saturdays for the fire.
And my, my last thing I want to talk about is water, and I'm gonna try to keep it short. I said, no, water is my passion. But, uh, uh, this weekend, Quinn came in and gave us the money. Now, the South Village Citizens for Public Awareness made an outright effort to get the water referendum through when it was passed. Now, at that time, back in two thousand and eight, we told the People's South Village that the quality of water will not change, you're gonna be paying twice as much for contaminated water. And you can get this, these grants from federal, from the federal government, which we should have because well pre-passed it, uh, exceeded the federal standard. We all knew that. We told South Village that. South Village and Illinois EPA, uh, decided, you know, ignore us, you know, forget what we saying. But the point I'm trying to make is, we borrowed four point two million, they knew the residents didn't have to pay for that. Now they're giving us forty, four point eight million for a grant. Seems like somebody covered up something, somebody dropped the ball here. So what I'm saying is, this money's gonna be offset with each other, and we're gonna be right while we start in two thousand and eight, trying to get us plenty more. How is that any progress for this village?
Okay, I hope everybody understands what she's saying, because what she's saying is true. And what she's saying is makes a lot of sense. Cause my question was this. Back in two thousand and twelve, when we had the crisis, we went to the government and told them that, well, I'm sorry, getting those, but they came out here and told us that our wells have to be shut down. We told them we didn't have the money to do the things that we did. We had to actually borrow the money or whatever. Where were they then? How come they couldn't do this then? All they think they could do was give us the I E P A guaranteed low interest loan. Loan at that time. How come we couldn't get X amount of money to fix that particular problem at that time, which was a health problem? Now, after we have spent X amount of money, through the low interest loan, it's gonna cost us about two hundred and some thousand, two thirty-seven, something like that, every year to pay this loan back for the next twenty years. Now the record is that we come out, or they come out with a four point eight million dollar, um, grant. You exactly, you're absolutely right. You're back to where you were. But things, the only thing you're gonna change would be an iron-out system, pumps, and some other minor equipment for each of the houses and a pad, and a permanent airstrip. Permanent airstrip. And that's what you're changing. Your water taste will still be the same, but you didn't change the water. So, but you voted. I didn't want to get into it because, you know, that's a tricky situation, because she's right again. It's gonna cost you even more money. Seven dollars, fifty-seven for a thousand is basically dropping a bucket what we have to do. But I did read on, in media, that surrounding company, I'm sorry, surrounding cities were arguing, one of them being Calumet City, were arguing about their rates that's gonna go from two dollars a forty cent to four dollars a thousand. And we're paying seven, and they have Chicago water, or Lake Michigan water. So, yes, that's happening. Calumet City is up in the hars, because the mayor wants to double the rates. Reason being, because the water from there comes from Harvey, and as we all know, what happened with Harvey, um, you know, they, they're behind in their, in their bill to Lake Michigan, to Chicago. So they had to raise their rates to get the money, and everything triples now. But they're paying two dollars, I think, twenty cents per thousand. Right now, you're paying seven dollars, and you don't have Lake Michigan water. So these are some of the things that, and, um, no curios, I, 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 I understand, and she's a hundred percent right. Why I did, why do we have to go that way? I'm one person, I can only do so much. Uh, if you got four or five people that's saying that we're gonna go this way, the only thing I can do is make you aware.
I can't, assign them, make them aware.
And that's the only thing I can do is make you, make you aware. I can't carry the vote. Any, another question, anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to know, as far as the water is concerned, is there any way we could put into a referendum, and they can revote?
You're talking about, if you're talking about to revote, to, to, to keep or to revote, to not have? Which one? To, to not, to not get Lake Michigan water? Yes, referendum is a referendum. You can, you can, you can put a referendum, you can put anything on, 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 on the ballot.
The last one's not working.
Well, I mean, you can, you can, you can have a referendum, because what, the reason why you have a referendum is for, you don't want your trustees or your mayor to raise something that's gonna be permanent like that. You want the people to make that decision. But all due fairness, you can, the trustees can't do that. I would never do that, especially something like that, without a vote to the people. Do you have to go and get the signatures that was got at that time? No. All you have to do is get the majority of the, of the trustees to say that they want something on, on the next election, um, as a referendum, and they want to put it on the ballot. If you, if, if the trustees didn't want to do that, then that's when you go out and you get X amount of signatures to have that done. But this last, they didn't have to do that. And yes, anyone knows that that particular meeting, I wanted to say, since there's so many people want the referendum, let's put it on the ballot, and it didn't. We were backing for, they finally did. We didn't have to have the, um, the, uh, people to come out with this. If the people say they want, let the people vote. It's a referendum. Let them vote. It doesn't mean that since it's on there, it's gonna pass. Doesn't have to. This one particularly, one didn't pass, so. Let, no, that's what it is, you, that's why I say it's important for everyone, for the residents, taxpayers or not. You live in this village, you pay for services. Get involved. Ask questions, raise your hand. Dispute, that's what it's, it's your money. You spend it in some kind of way, you, 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 you're giving the village power to do certain things. If you don't say anything, people think that everything is okay. They think that what you, what was happening in the fire, so. I don't hear anyone complaining about it, so I must be doing a fine job. But we cannot have a court out in the parking lot, at the house, whatever. You have to come to where your legislators are and say, hey, I'm tired of this, I don't want this. Or ask questions. And if they don't want to answer your question, this is what this is about. You, you make, make them aware, that, you know, that you're tired of it, that you want, you want answers. You deserve answers. This is your village. Believe it or not, this is not right. We, only thing we do is push policy. And if you don't like the policy, say something about it. But that's all we do is push policy, trustees pay, all we do is vote money out. That's why I'm so adamant about making sure that that money is voted out correctly. Because when things come, and, and things happen, mayor doesn't go, he doesn't vote a damn lot, your trustees do. And if you, if the money is not right, they go ask the trustees if they voted the money out. Mayor has deniability. All he did was entertain a motion. He didn't vote. Anything like that, he entertained the motion. So you, that's why it behooves you to know who you put in these seats. And behooves you to know who's running your, your city. Do a background check, see what they're about, see what they do. Go by their house. See how they take care of their, their own problems, see how they take care of their own life. That's who you put in office. But that take long to find out. Oh, yeah, you can go and find any, any official, city officials' record. It's public. You can find out where they live, go by and drive by and look and see what they have. Ask them questions. You know, look at, what, what, you know, what they're doing in their life. That's who you put in office, because believe you, what practice makes perfect. Whatever you see them do all the time, that's what's gonna happen. Who was next? Yes, sir.
Not concerned, little. How will you vote? You know, the next time, I mean, when things come up about this water, Lake Michigan water, whatever. Cause I've been expecting, they plan on, on the referendum, and that's what I've been telling my son. And they plan on helping with the referendum to try to move it off the ballot for Lake Michigan water. And I would like to know, you know, some ways about this, excuse me, about this money that's going out. Are you gonna vote, and I'll be in favor, but are the people that is here at these meetings tonight, uh, how will you vote? How the money is distributed?
Okay, that's, that's, that's a good question. Bad is young. Okay, how will I vote? In regard to Lake Michigan water, I mean, how am I going to vote as far as, um, the four point eight million dollars we're talking about? Okay. I'm gonna vote. It's not about a vote, I already asked. Now let me explain it to this, don't forget now, I'm not bored, I'm one person. I would take that four point eight million. Cause I'm, 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 I'm also, you know, not a businessman, but I do know a little bit about fire hydrants. We have a vote.
You know a lot about it.
Well, I know a little bit, not a lot. We have a loan. We've already had a loan in place for four point, I'm sorry, five point two million, to whoever used to take care of the, uh, airship and some things like that, that's why that loan was got, that's why we got that. Now, the government's, the government gives me four point eight million dollars. I would take that money and use it to do what was told for us to do, take that airstrip. So we can move forward and get Lake Michigan water. If you take that money to pay the loan off, as I said earlier, you're gonna, you will not get another loan. Our rating, our credit rating is bad. We just got this. Okay, you paid that off. Okay, you don't have another bill. But now where's the obligation to the people that you said that, you know, that you said that you were gonna get Lake Michigan water? So it's a double-edged sword. Will your rates go up? Yes. Will you pay more money than you can right now for Lake, to get Lake Michigan water? Definitely, yes. You will. Definitely. So there's a little way around it, somebody next up to say, oh, they want to, are we gonna get X amount, or, you know, your payments on this side over again? You know, that's business. That's my person, believe. Now, as far as voting for whatever, right now, you have in place people that may not, you know, may not want Lake Michigan water. They have that right to go ahead and have another referendum. They have that right to do that, if they want to do that. Put a little ballot to say, okay, we don't want Lake Michigan water. But you have to check with your lawyers, which I feel you have to check your lawyers because that was a binding referendum. And that's a difference. So I'm not sure if they can or cannot, I'm just saying, because it was binding, which means that it has to happen within a certain period of time, and if it, if it was voted down, then it could be brought back up for X amount of time, so. That's, that's something that I would, that I'm one person. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to ask, if, if when Quinn presented the idea of the grant to South Village, did he, did, did
Did it happen?
We didn't have it. No, I know, I know, he, he didn't give us the grant yet.
No, no, it happened, you said presented the idea to South Village?
Didn't, no, the idea of it.
The first I heard about that grant was today, Quinn stood up to that forty, he said, I need a full one day. That's the first time I heard about it. It was nothing that, you know, it was, I'll put it this way, it was sad at the time, but it was a grievance that he wanted to make and that he made with the mayor, he wasn't gonna be one of the announced. The mayor knew, a month, maybe three weeks before. Did he, did he, let me know, but that's open, it transferred ago. But no, he didn't let me know.
Did you hear of any discussions as to whether, whether there's gonna be any, uh, stipulations as to how the, the grant is to be used?
The grant, I, I talked to a couple of representatives, the grant can be used for anything related to water. It's a grant, so it would be, you can't take it in place, they already can't take it in by, if it's a water-related expense, yes, it can be used for that. Which would be infrastructure prepared, things like that, or whatever. But as far as we going ahead of time, no matter. I knew the speculating, Magic said that, that is my operating there, but it was being, it was rumors that was talked about before. And there's rumors now that they're gonna use it for X amount, we don't know yet. We're speculating right now that it may be used for to pay the loan off. There's nothing that's been voted yet, hasn't gone through. That has to go through the board. Board has to make that decision.
I want to know a question.
I'm gonna get somebody to do this right.
Can I have
Okay, go ahead.
Now, are you willing to hold up, hold a meeting up to twelve, one o'clock, I'm just saying to bring that point out?
Let me tell you something. That's what I'm asking, you're talking about as far as, as far as
I'm just saying, never one meeting. Just like you had on that, that meeting about the budget. That, right? I think the budget, uh, third. Can you hold them? I mean, I'm trying to explain to people.
Yeah, oh, I can. But you're
This is the type of, of, uh,
I can do that.
This is the type, this is the type of trust fee I'm looking for.
Well, you're I will do that. However, as soon as that word gets out, it'll be one circumvented. You can bet your dollar on that. If I say I'm gonna have a meeting on February the seventh about the expenditure of the four point eight million dollars, I'll tell you the first time.
That's, that's about what I'm saying. I'm saying, that's the village's calling me, but if you deny
I understand what you're saying.
Trying to explain to the people that they have, and, and go, cause see the board, both of the boards don't seem like they're able to do that.
Let me, let me, let me, let me explain something to you, though. At the, at the last, I don't know if you were there at the last committee meeting, second item on the agenda was fire hydrants. That was my presentation. I asked a question, I asked the village, um, fire chief, and I asked the public works director to come up front. Mayor took the meeting, explained for twenty minutes, but then I asked him to stop. Then it's like, oh, you know, I explained, and I told him, very sorry that I had you guys come on, the mayor said, you gotta come on, I do. I'm very sorry I wasted you guys' time, because if I had, I know that the mayor was gonna talk for you, I'd just ask him. So if you ask me, am I going to try to have a time on me for something like that, I will try. But as soon as it gets out there, it's gonna be circumvented, and it's gonna be emergency this and that. Because they don't want to make it look like, like, I just got to say. Don't make, they want to make it look like that, I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm just, you know. But you've been running longer, you understand, it's a lot of, Larry?
Uh, Mary Stewart. Um, Mr. Burgess, I'm trying to get an understanding. I heard, you know, some of you give the speech at the church, we'll have to follow the money. Now, we, I understand we don't have this money. What I'm asking is, we already got a loan for five point, what was this?
Five point two.
Five point two. Have we paid that off?
You don't, we're not, we're not having to pay that off in two weeks, I'm finished.
I, I understand, that's my point I'm getting at. We, we've got a debt already to five point two million dollars.
Yeah, some people thought it was a grant.
Yeah, I understand that, it was a loan. Now, that was from who?
What? The five point two was a loan guaranteed by I E P A. The loan was, we owe it back, we owe it back.
Yes.
Did he give him, might be all back.
I understand that. Now, my point that I'm getting at is, we just got where it's coming, I understand, four point eight million dollars. Now, on that loan of five point two, there's interest that we're paying. I think, what, per year? For what, how many years?
We, we, did you pay, did you do, did you do the math?
I understood.
Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, my point that I'm getting at is, this four point eight million dollars, because, um, in my understanding of Saturday, we got the money, let's say, we can pay this debt off. That's what I understood would be, because I didn't like that we were, uh, not clear and free with this. But we can pay this debt off, eliminate all that interest that be, that's stockpiling on us over the next twenty years. As I understood you said, um, we can't get any, we won't be able to get another loan. That's looking foresight. I don't see the way you could say that, even though I agree with you on many issues. But the thing I'm looking at, since I, since I see that we have this money, pay the five point two, pay it down. Since we, uh, I'd rather do that than look at it, did you check the books today? Did you check them yesterday? Are you gonna check them tomorrow? See, because I took that, follow the money line and look at it, where, no, I don't want to. We'll spend that money, why if we pay off this loan here? You know, and I look at you just standing on that. You know, because else I have to check with you every day on, did you check yesterday, today, and tomorrow?
Okay, let me, let me explain something to you. First of all, you said we would be able to borrow money. It took us almost two years
Yeah.
to get the four point five point two.
Yeah.
It took us raising the water rate to show that we could pay back that money, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which, which, at this last rush, we took three hundred thousand dollars of water fund to the, to the general fund.
Yes.
Hey, 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 you, you, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna answer your question. Can we, we don't have a bond rate.
I understand.
No, no. What that means is, when you don't have a bond rate, and excuse my pronouncing, what you mean is you're gonna pay crackhead prices. But that's what you're gonna do, because if you want to borrow money, we might as well tell them that, or someplace like that now. Do you take that money? A businessman borrows as much as he can, as long as he can. That's what businessmen does. We're about trying to pay it back, but in the meantime, in the meantime, you have the money you can shoot to other things with, look at the country club, they ain't caught right now because on the rack, and then somebody gave you six million dollar tax. And all of a sudden, guess what? But they, guess what they give it then? They use it for something else. Now, they worry about paying it back later. Do you pay off the loan? That makes sense, okay, you can pay the loan off, sir. But now, you're back at square one, and all you did was get airstrips, which was told by the government. You got, you got those things, but you paying seven dollars for the same water that you had. And you took the bicarbonate, which was, which was there, which was coming, it has nothing to do with, you know, the tape. Bicarbonate has nothing to do with piece of water. Then that's a thing, that's a chemical, that's a gag. So, I mean, I, will I, will I support it? I have to see more, I have to see more. I have to see more, which one? Because I'm not, we have enough that's, you know, that's going on. I'm not gonna sit here and raise, raise the people and not give them something. I'm not gonna sit here and keep living tax money, I'm a taxpayer. And I pay a lot more tax than you think I do. I'm a taxpayer.
Burgess, you missing my point.
But you're asking, you said that it's, it's profitable, I'm sorry, it makes sense to pay off the loan that you have.
Yes.
Okay, now, you paid that loan off, and you, and you brought this, and you brought all this thing that you brought. How you fit that in your mind?
I understand that, guess what, that's foresight.
No, that's, that's, that's the fact.
I'm going to say something from last night's meeting.
Okay.
Right now, I don't see the way you see where we're gonna spend this four point eight million. I don't see the way you see it. My point exactly, because you asked a question last night on twenty-two thousand
Twenty-two thousand dollars?
On this
Oh, thank you, I
issue.
Okay, twenty-two thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, and my point that I, I'm getting
It wasn't the same issue, it's a different
Not the same, but the point is, you had to ask a question. And I see the way you asked, uh, turning the question, and you didn't get a straight answer.
True.
Point blank, and them people that sit alongside you, the rest of the board members, can know or maybe don't know, only the mayor knows that, how that's gonna be done. So I'd rather look at it the way, spend that four point eight, because we're gonna get an answer to that twenty-two thousand.
Grant money is, is, uh, what do you call it, is, uh, now, uh, my
Yes.
One hundred and one percent. You talk about getting it. They do not let you have money on the come, I need this, or you have to show documentation.
Well, that's what you talked about last night.
No, you, that was two different things. That's taking money out of fun, paying for something else that we never entered into a contract with. When you have the grant money, and the stipulations are for water related issues, that four point eight million, and that four point eight, oh, I'm sorry, four point two million, that's all water related issues.
The twenty two thousand.
Twenty two thousand dollars, something, now, you talking about something.
Part of the grant money that was given to the village.
No.
Through the housing commission.
No. You're talking to twenty two thousand dollars?
Yes.
No, twenty two thousand dollars that was, was talked about yesterday was money that was owed to people that were cutting grass, through the housing commission, through I D, was it I S D S? Okay, okay, through them, which the village that we entered into a contract with. I asked the question, is it legal to pay something that the village did not enter into a contract with? That has nothing to do with the grant. The grant money is the grant money. Has nothing to do with that, that, that money that I asked, that twenty two thousand dollars, I asked a lawyer before I sat there and voted, as a trustee, is it legal to pay something that we, in other words, we as trustees, and the board that I entered into? Larry Stewart went out there and got fifteen, twenty people to do such other thing. And he said, I'm gonna get a grant. And I got documentation, I'm sure you don't get this grant, but I need, but these people went out there and they did this job. We haven't got the money for five months. Can you help me out, village board? That's exactly what happened. That's exactly, no, it's answers the question, that's exactly what happened. Now, the village board has to make the determination, are we gonna help Larry Stewart out and pay these people? Or these people that were already told that they were waiting, that they would have to wait on that grant money? When they started to, to do the job, they knew that, that at that time, it was, it was dependent upon the end of grant money to get paid. They didn't say, they didn't know how, they should have been told that it may take me up to a year, I don't know what the stipulation were, I didn't, never saw the contract. When I saw the contract, when I finally got a copy of the contract, the contract stated that the village would have to pay, and we would get reimbursed.
On grant money?
No, sir, on this side, but I'm talking about the twenty two thousand or whatever. The village would have to pay. Pardon me?
The grant money for that was the initial money?
The, no, the village would pay all of the seventy five thousand.
I agree.
And then, and, but, it was never told to us.
I know, but see the grant.
I didn't know about that, I asked Larry, uh, I mean, uh, uh, Mr. Hope, and the, uh,
The housing.
Housing commission, I asked, they told me we got this, it's had to do the village.
I understand, I still on that, I said, over that house.
Okay, so I'm just saying, well, it happened.
I can take the grant money.
It happened. Five to one, very easy.
I understood that, that's all.
That's, that's how you can do, you can do whatever you want, when you have, when you have that, who, 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 yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I understood what you're talking about. Hello, I'm calling, I'm getting back to the water. Cause that's important to me, cause I have children living out here in the house, so I have an house. So I do pay taxes, real estate, and they are there now. It seems to me, I don't know how Ford Heights got their water, why we didn't get it? Why, because actually, we're a little bigger than Ford Heights. Ford Heights was just shipped out from, uh, Chicago Heights, cause they didn't wanna be bothered with this little area, and that's how they came to feed Ford Heights. So I wanna know why I prefer, we don't have to pay it back. I heard somebody say, that's your thing. That Ford Heights doesn't have to pay it back. Why, I prefer.
I'm so glad that, I wanted to say this, and I'm so glad that you brought that up. Because the reason why Ford Heights got theirs, is basically how we got that four point eight million dollars. Now, if you wanna do something for me as governor, pay for my infrastructure, do what you did to Ford Heights, pay for the hookup. Acquire the land between point A and point B, and put the pipe in, that's what happened with Ford Heights. How do they qualify? They're the lowest per capita in United States. Per capita means per person. They're the lowest per capita in United States, they qualify for every loan that's out there, every grant that's out there, every, anything that's out there, it's the people, proper people apply for it. That's how they got it. If Quinn wanted to do something, pay for the hookup, that's been about fifteen, twenty five mill, pay for that. Four point eight is going, and after all you do is pay it off, like I ever said, you pay it off just a bill, that's it. Thank you very much, but, that's not solving the problem. They had the problem, and that's how they did it. They're getting ready to, uh, take over their, I don't know if you guys read the paper, they're getting ready to take over their public works. Because they behind a couple million dollars to Chicago Heights, who take, who's taken them to court, who seized records to take their money, because they're behind and can't pay it, they're forty, uh, what is it, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, that's nothing. But then again, it's only four point, what's it, four thousand three hundred people there? In, uh, Ford Heights, but if you're gonna do something, that's what you do. Do what Jesse Jackson did, he did it for votes, okay, he's happy, he did, but guess what? He was able to do it. He passed it through, they got the water, that's how they got it. If you wanted to help South Village, four point eight is nice, I appreciate that. But the majority of the people said they wanted this, because you could have done this, pay for all that. Then let us, then let us negotiate with whoever we have to negotiate with to get the water. And, tell you the truth, you wouldn't have to raise water rates. The reason why you gotta raise water rates, you gotta pay for that bond, but you gotta go out there and try to get. You have to get a bond, as I said before, it's that crackhead raise right now, cause we don't have a rate. You used to have a rate. When it gets past B, they don't raise you no more, they just say, it's over.
Are we gonna get the money, or have you seen it writing? And when are we supposed to get it?
Four point eight million dollars is, will not come, won't be released until we show that it's paid. They're not gonna give us four point eight six back, as a grant. Once we show that, take this, company A come out and do such other thing, or you deliver that four point two million dollar bill, and say, hey, this is what it is, they'll pay that. That's how, that's how the money will, oh, they never gonna let you, that's what it's, you know.
What I mean is, are we gonna get it? When was, when was it promised to us?
I was told.
After the election, because, you know, we're not gonna get it.
I was told, even if he does, if it's in the election, I'm just what I was told, that they're gonna have to, they're gonna circulate it off, so when is it coming? But I was told that even if it's definitely in the election, the money's still coming.
It's supposed to, it's already been raised, I understand. What is he gonna take, let's give him the, don't wanna take it back.
I mean, is there anything in writing on this?
Right now, we're supposed to be filling the papers about the next Wednesday, I was told Monday, so I'm pretty sure sometime this week or Monday, we're supposed to be submitting papers to the state to get the paperwork going, for us to actually get the grant. Once we get a certificate, comes a certificate, once you get a certificate, then you have rights to, you know, submit bills or whatever.
I wouldn't, yeah. Be honest with you. Last year, yeah, this year?
One more, okay, you had to handle it earlier, okay.
Last night, and there's three people who witnessed that, including yourself. The man said that meeting around Missalas, it was under Indian agenda. That he said that he, that four point eight million was gonna pay off some loan. Now, I was under the impression Saturday, according to the posters and all this stuff, that was going for the water infrastructure and everything. I get to the meeting last night, and we were talking about this money, all that money is going for a big loan that Charlie took out, maybe last year, I don't know, I forget whether it was for, but that's what that four point eight million dollars is for. Now, how do we know? Just like the guy said back there in the back, if we gonna get this in right, that this is going for the water and not for that loan?
That loan is water related. That loan we took out, that five point two is for the air strips, the permanent air strips, the pipe, the, uh, pump, uh, all other, uh, what was it, the iron house removal system, and some of the tanks that are in all three houses, and to get well number three back online. Those are all water related, they qualify for that loan.
Okay. Now, you just said well three.
Yes.
We ain't supposed to, uh, from, from my understanding, once that well is down, you cannot get it back up.
No, you can bring it back up, they have, we have, there's, there's air strippers on well, uh, well three right now. I don't know, she was, I don't have none. But then, then, no, your question is, that money can be used, that four point eight can be used to pay off that loan? Because there is one, it is one, it's water related, so it can't be used for that. Yes, right there you did it. It's clean water initiative, suppose make this falls on the clean water initiative.
Thank you. Judy Kess here. I was at the village hall on Saturday when Governor Quinn was here, and watched the presentation that he made to the village. Um, and it was very shocking to me. Afterwards, I did ask the mayor, are we going to get this contingent upon whether he makes it in office or not? And he said, no. That the paperwork is already started, and within this coming week, which is this week, the paperwork should be completed, and then they should move forward. So, from what was said at that meeting, plus what the mayor said, we are going to get that money, four point eight. What we do with it, again, is, uh, another issue. I agree with you, Larry, that paying off that loan would be a wise thing to do to avoid all that money. But, when you look at where we are, where we've been, and then where we're going, can you trust that? We got that loan for five point two million dollars, because at the time, we were in an emergency crisis situation. That has gone, that has been resolved. And we are basically in limbo right now. So you pay that loan off. We don't have what it takes to get another loan, we are no longer in emergency and in a critical state. So, getting the money, we may be able to get a loan, but we're gonna pay twice the amount of interest. So, is it advantageous to pay it off? I'm glad I'm not sitting up there and have to make that decision. But it's, it's, it's a tricky thing, and a whole lot of, uh, thinking has to go into what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it. My problem is, uh, and, and I'm putting water aside, because it, it is my personal feeling, and it is my own personal feeling. I won't see Chicago water as South Village in my lifetime. Because there's no way in hell, the taxpayers can pay what it's gonna take to fix the infrastructure and everything else it's gonna take to bring that Chicago water here. Once it gets here, whoever we're hooked up to is gonna decide how much they're gonna charge us. I'm already paying, and I'm landish among the money out of water bill. I just paid my water bill today, two hundred and sixty eight dollars. I'm the only one in my house. And I know my dog doesn't drink that much water. So, you know, I mean, you, you keep adding, add, then add, and I'm now on a fixed income. When do we draw the line here? So, are they looking forward to Chicago water? No way. Mm-mm, I don't want it, because that means I gotta move. I can't, I can't pay it, I gotta move. Now, I wanna get on to something that I came here to talk about tonight. I need to find something to me. And I don't know if any of you caught it, or did not catch it, but I'm gonna make you aware. Last night, I was at the board meeting, and it was the, the attorney gave his report. Uh, almost a district attorney, uh, group gave a report, and it was at that time that he brought up the Open Meetings Act violation against Derek Burgess. He did not say the board. He specifically said Derek Burgess. Okay, therefore, it makes me feel thereafter run bad. Now, I was talked to very rudely and very sarcastically, because of my submitting FOIAs and the amount of money I am asking the village, because the FOIAs have to go to the, to the attorneys. Well, when this attorney last night brought up the Open Meetings Act, and Derek, that meant that it was already in the hands of that attorney. Our village clerk filed that. Instead of taking care of things within, having a meeting with the mayor and the rest of the trustees, and talking about what she felt happened, not that she knows what happened, because she wasn't here. It's all hearsay on her part, but she filed it. But that's kind of her, that's what she is. She turned it over to the state's attorney, and then now it's at the attorneys. We are already, with our tax dollars, paying a small fortune for her in another violation, because she won't get information for a FOI. And the attorney is covering her. It is my understanding that when, as a taxpayer, you submit a complaint about Derek Burgess, or whoever it might be, as a trustee, he is entitled to legal services. In other words, he, almost in this service, should be working with him to find out exactly what happened. Did, did a violation really occur, or can we get out of this thing with nobody get anything wrong, and everybody now is aware of how they have to do things? That didn't happen. Now, the attorney is already working with our village clerk. What happens to Derek Burgess? Who's going to?
Represent him.
Represent him? And I'm sorry, I'm not saying anything against our mayor, I'm not saying anything against Derek Burgess. I, I feel, you know, I talked to a lady tonight, that I don't know from Joel coverage. Made me feel comfortable, and made me feel she was sincere, and is, is really looking out for us and our kids. And it was a good feeling. I do not get that feeling with our board. I'm sorry, there is no way that Derek Burgess should have found out about this, uh, violation at a board meeting last night. The mayor knew, other trustees knew, and he finds out sitting up there with everybody looking at it, as lawyer brings it out, that he violated the Open Meetings Act. I wanted to get up and do something nasty to somebody. It is election time, people, they're pulling dirty shots.
Yep.
Yes.
And you know what, it's extremely evident, and as Derek said, it encourages him to, to stick to it more. Well, I'm the same way, they just threw out the challenge. The gauntlets down people. It's time to stand up and you can. So I don't know, uh, how we can answer that question as to, who's gonna represent him? Um, as far as whether there was a violation or not, I don't know. But, um, we shall see. And as far as Derek Burgess goes, and it is true, every step of the way, no matter what he does, it was sad. Recently, as recent as last night. Derek Burgess and his inner government group doesn't do anything. Well, excuse me. I stood up and I asked about Jeff Darkin, he has no committee at all anymore. Don't put down, don't put down one, and not put down the other.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, and then, you know what, I'm sorry, I was there. I, because of Derek and the things he was doing, I went to, um, uh, place I'm hosted. Bloom Township. And I talked to those people, I took all my paperwork, and, and, I was a registered nurse for forty four years, I'm not dumb. But yeah, I am dumb. But yeah, I am dumb when it comes to certain things. My husband handled all the money. He handled everything. I didn't have to write a check. He did it. I loved it. I got money when I wanted it. You know, I worked toward, I got it. But now it's my job and I don't know what I'm doing. So I went to, I went to them. They filled out all the paperwork for me and told me to take it to Markham. Well, it was too late to get to Markham. My car could get in the building and all that, so Halloween morning I went. I had an extremely high tax bill. Now, I don't live in a nice house like Derek Burgess does. You know, my house right around the corner from Strassburg School. I bought it there because I had three small kids that were gonna be going to school and I wanted it close. So I, I lived in one of the first houses that went up. Been here since sixty-five. So I got this tax bill and I almost had a heart attack. I thought, holy God, I'm hyped for this. I took it there. I did everything I was supposed to. I went to Markham the following day. I handed them the paperwork. I waited for them to do whatever they do and I saved. I saved over a thousand dollars. They brought it down. I was so thankful. I sat in my car and I cried. Because I was ready to call my son in Maryland and tell him, make room for me. I gotta get out of here. I, I can't pay all this anymore. But they, they cut it. Uh, my, my bill was a little over sixteen hundred dollars for the first payment. And they brought it down to just a shade over five. And I was so thankful. So to say that Derek Burgess and his group doesn't do anything, I wanna, again, I wanna get up there and smack somebody. And I'm not a violent person. Uh, and I've never hit anybody. But, um, they get you to that point where you feel like you want to. I, I don't know anybody like Derek, uh, and, and I haven't known him that long. But to me, he's dedicated. He's got what it takes to be what he wants to be. I'm loyal to him and until somebody else can show me differently, I'm not gonna change it. And all the Debbie Williamses and all the Cratchell ladies or whoever they are that wanna drag it down, go for it baby. We got something waiting for you. We're gonna win the election.
Thank you Judy. I'm checking now. Anyway, thank you so much. Okay, can I get someone that hasn't asked? Okay.
Hello, everybody. Okay, so I have a question. Exactly what Judy said. What does Jeff do? If he's supposed to sit up there, I know everybody has a job, right? Everybody got a job up there on the board. He don't do anything. The mayor took all the verification, whatever thing that they do. He don't do nothing. Won't even answer questions. He just sit up there. Why don't he pay for that?
Okay. For trustees get paid per meeting. You get a stipend per every meeting. And then if you have a committee, you get a stipend for your committee meeting, one committee. You go fifteen committees, you're only gonna get one stipend if you're only gonna get one, you get one. There's nothing that states that you have to have a committee. There's not a law that states that you have, that's you giving back, that's you out there talking to people, that's you doing whatever. To be in charge of something that you have to do, it's at least back in, it's wrong. Town hall reason that we do right here is me. That doesn't do with, this by, I have a committee in the government level, which I got after the election, when, when Hank won the election. I was in charge of economic development. I was the one that was out there and that's fact, I helped bring Winthac in. He knew, he knew exactly what I did. Right after the election, the mayor does have the authority to recommend and appoint trustees to this committee. He told me he was taking me off of economic development and he was gonna do that. That's a part-time mayor now. He was gonna do that and I could have verification. Now, I don't know, I'm sorry, maybe just me, I'm not up to it. I'm not, you know, thinking I'm better than somebody else, however. I think my skills are better served rather than dig flowers and, and, and ask for the village. No one, be prior to this, there was never a trustee in charge of verification with always adding committee coming from the mayor. He would appoint people to be on that committee, but there was never a trustee on verification. Cause just people are doing what they're doing, planting flowers. I told them, no. And then I came up with the intergovernmental. Now, in the government level, as you read my, my, um, my statement and my mission statement, is to act as liaison between all the taxing bodies. School district, library board, and other, um, Blue Township and everything, you know, things like that to bring information back to the people. That's the reason for that, that's the reason why I formed that, so I could be liaison for different taxing bodies. I could go and talk to the other cities and do with other mayors, you know, because I do know a lot of different, you know, mayors of different towns. Well, at the first two times when I had a committee, it was fine. But the third time, he started giving the government a relationship reports. He started recording what other towns, what Blue Township was doing, what, uh, um, Cedar, everything that I tried to do, he tried to suppress that. So therefore, he tried to minimize what it is that I'm doing, but I didn't care. But that's the kind of person I am. I made sure that I still brought information to the people the best I could. And I have a website. And I had that website. It's up in, you know, and, uh, we post certain things. So, you're asking your question. He's not obligated to uncover anything, but it just shows you, as I said before, what you have. And, well, what you have and check out who you put in the office. Do background check, not only background check, do your homework, kind of, with the bills. He's got the money.
Kelvin Jones, um, I'm just trying to follow a little money here. Okay. There are seven dollars per thousand gallon of water, right?
Seven dollars a thousand gallon.
Thousand gallon.
Seven fifty, seven ninety, seven hundred and fifty per one thousand gallon.
Okay, and that went up because of the, um, five point two million dollar one. No, no.
We were paying three fifty. Three fifty was not enough money to make our bills, to keep our bills. I mean, no, no, we were behind. We were, uh, we were losing money actually on water. So we went, and it was talked about, um, I don't know if you guys remember Bud Mason came out. When that guy came out from, from, from the government. He came out and let us know that we are operating in a deficit. We need to raise our rate, not just break even. Break even point was at five fifty. On that referendum that you, that you had, you had that only spelled out three fifty, five fifty, seven fifty. It was spelled out for the reach. The five fifty was put in there to break even. Seven fifty was put in there to put money aside to do the infrastructure for the preparation of lake nation water. That's what it was. It didn't say that would be the final cost of deficit for the side, cause you have to show that you can pay back a bond that you have. If, if you don't show a bank that you have the capability of paying back that money like a loan to them.
Okay, so without, without that loan, with the, the water, um, rate that went up?
The rate, the water rate, once you voted that referendum, it was gonna go up. Five point two million dollars is nothing. Okay, that's not much money to break definition water. It's gonna cost you about twenty, twenty-five basis. Cause the water main breaks and things like that. We have to acquire land, point eight, point B, we have to make, it's just a lot of things. However, if you go towards that, but it didn't happen.
So, if that loan is paid off with this four point eight million, will the water rate go down?
You want me to, okay.
Okay, yeah, no, no. It will go to the general fund.
And you want me to add? I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask Al. Okay. I'm gonna tell you straight out, I'm not gonna trip and quote anything. If you ever see, ever see the government get back Al. Ever, and it, if you ever see the government say, we raised the tax, we'll give back. I got the money. Why would they give it back? Even though, like you said, you're paying off and you have to pay that, and you're, you know, they'll find, they'll find something, they'll find something.
So we, we should use that four point eight million for infrastructure then, because we gotta pay the loan anyway. I mean, we, our rate is up, so we, we're gonna be paying it regardless. So we might as well use the money for, for infrastructure anyway because it just won't matter.
Now you know why I asked the question I did for Larry, because he was asking like, I wanted some else to say this, cause people think that I'm trying to run something up. You're absolutely right. You got the money for it. Use it for what you're supposed to use it for. You know, you're gonna, that two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars? Okay, now all you're doing now is digging him off the hook to do something else and you said the doggone law, it won't be lake nation water.
So will this be like a little money pot for the?
It'll, it'll, no, it'll happen. You won't have to pay that much. The loan is not in this year's budget. This is with the budget. If two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars was not in that budget, so therefore, we didn't have to pay it in the back. The money's not due until we get to spending it all on the different things we get to spend. Once we finish that, then the money, just like a student loan. Once you graduate, money due. Yeah, Larry, I mean, uh, Joe.
Uh, you said it was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that wasn't included in the budget. However, there was three hundred thousand dollars allocated for water.
Okay, I, I mentioned that. I mentioned that earlier, that three hundred thousand dollars was taken out of the water fund from the budget, I'm, I'm sorry, at the budget period. That we would withdraw that money from the water fund. That would be an expenditure coming from the water fund going into the general fund to help balance the budget. Now, prior to that, every time you took a dollar out of the water fund for anything other than water related expenses, had to be voted out by the board. Which was, which where it should be. Now, you circumvent it, they don't have to do that. Now, he can take that money out as he needs it to pay as he needs, if he's fit. Because now it's part of the budget. So that's why, one of the reasons why I voted against that budget as it was presented. Because now you give someone the opportunity to spend unaccountable money.
I, I wanna ask the father, I'm very tired, so. Mr. Burgess, along last night, um, I was with Tru, Tras parents. You know, and yet, your question was sort of toward the attorney and yet the people in the audience didn't get it. You know, I understood where you were going with it.
Okay.
And they're not getting that other than that is. I needed it to where we all understood why you asked him and why we saw he wasn't gonna give you a yes or no answer.
Okay.
And the other issue is, I don't care for knocking personal people. We're gonna do that.
What do you mean, you don't care for knocking, what do you mean? I mean?
Names are mentioned.
You mean tonight or like, okay, but tonight, okay, but tonight, if you're elected official Larry.
Yes, I know.
If you're elected official, you're free game.
I understand.
That's part of the job. If you don't like something that I'm doing, that's why we're here. Use my name.
The only thing I'm looking for is so we'll all know why you asked for an answer that I didn't see who was gonna get.
Oh, well.
Did you get the answer that we didn't hear?
Larry, let me explain something to you. And I just wanna, real quick, because we gotta wrap this up. The reason why I didn't get an answer? Because there was, because my answer was no. In other words, there, there, that you really can't do it. But he can't say that, so. Don't forget, I was talking to a lawyer. Their job is to... One more question then now I'm gonna ask Dr. Lee to say something and then I said, yes, go ahead.
What's your question now? Uh, I was told the night that something happened over there at Leves. Can you elaborate on that?
What, what were you, I'm sorry, but, I mean, this, I understand what you're saying, that this is a rumor mill. I don't, okay. I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to be a rumor mill. I'm going by good facts, but the guy from Leves told me. Leves had a party at their restaurant, I mean, it's like at their lounge after hours. And they were in there with the, uh, he told me they had employees and, uh, family there after hours. I asked him, does your license state that you have to meet the premises at two o'clock? He said, yes. I said, okay. That's self-explanatory, if you know that already. The part I didn't like was, and this is just me, that they closed here without due process. In other words, you close a person before you have a hearing. Now, and then you want to have a hearing after the fact, so you already prejudiced him. That's the only part I didn't like. Now, as far as if your license states that you're not supposed to serve alcohol, have alcohol, or be on that premise at two, at two o'clock, they give you a fifteen minute grace period. It's just like anything else, it's spelled out that you should know that ahead of time. So, I, you know, I don't know any other rumor mill that was going on fact, and that's what happened. That's why I exposed. So, that's the only thing.
Can I, can I please say this? I, I mean, I'm.
Okay, this one, go ahead, go ahead.
Residents should understand that right now we're paying seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty cents to treat contaminated water. Your quality of water will not change. We're paying seven dollars and fifty cents for three fifty year old wells. Although EPA has told us that the groundwater believed well free is not fit for municipal service. These are all facts. They gave us this four point two minutes to cover their butt up and drop it off. And it's simple as that. Now they come back with a rap, so we don't have to pay the money off. But as the wild wells get older, they're fifty years old already, well free, the integrity has been questioned. Things will not change. We're gonna pay more water for, to, to treat your contaminated water. Even though Miss Tass, uh, and other people are not willing to lay mission water, but why keep you paying more water for to ta, to treat contaminated water? This is like water store. I'm gonna pay ten dollars for this contaminated water, but I get something I know is fairly safe. So you guys have to think about it. Do you wanna pay more to treat your contaminated water? Which L Y E P A has said you cannot use, is not fit for municipal service? Or do you wanna go and buy something you know that's fairly safe? You guys have to think about that. And as of that, the, uh, uh, referendum is binding, is law. And that if, uh, Southwood does not have a due conduct, due justice court, they can be brought in the court. Eventually, they have to put in there, how long it's gonna take them, so they can stall all they want. But they have to give us lay mission water, so you might as well prepare to pay the high costs for water. But you're gonna pay it anyway. You're gonna pay for this, to treat, to treat contaminated water or pay for lay mission water. It's simple as that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Lee, I just want to, first of all, I gotta say before, you guys, I really appreciate she let us have meetings here for four times. The school district did. Now it's time for us to move into the neighborhood. I'm gonna try to get something, uh, I've had a couple of, um, offers, not offers, but suggestions. And I'm going to, as I gather everybody's phone number and then let you know where it's gonna be. Hopefully that I don't, it doesn't go back to village hall, but I, I think, I think it's important for us to have these meetings. And these meetings, as you can notice, I'm not, it's not about politics. It's about your, it's about where you live at. Be involved. I need you to come out. I see there's some people that do come out to every meeting, to, to the village hall meeting. Ask questions. Ask questions. Don't worry about if someone ridicules you or whatever the case may be. And this is, you, you don't ridicule you when you pay your taxes, when you pay your water bill, when you go up there and pay for fines and things like that. Ask questions. This is your dollar. This is what pays. The village employees, the elected officials, and everything else, your dollar. Cause without your dollar, we wouldn't exist. So get involved in your village. Let them know if something that you don't like, don't talk about it, and, and, as I said before, in the parking lot. Raise your hand. I will tell you this. They tell you that I can't answer questions because it's not on the, uh, agenda. If you ask a question about police, fire, asthma, public work, they're all on the agenda. Those department heads are there. You can ask that question. And if you don't get an answer, I always tell the story about Rose Langston. Come back next week. I got the same question. Come back next week. Embarrassed. Embarrass whoever it is. Because believe it or not, you don't know this, and I'm just telling you this right now because I'm a little tired of it. We don't ask questions. It's done by design, so you won't have to question what we're doing. Just like any other politician, I'm gonna take care of so-and-so because he's right here. But after we get through with the meeting, I'll let you know who you are. Don't let that happen to you. And know you, like I said, you pay your water bill. Ask questions. This is your village. You are in control. You tell us what to do, not the other way around. And if you don't like it, okay, at least you have a duty to know it. It may not go your way, but it's in the minutes. And all the cameras kind of go around at that meeting, somebody's taking. Because years ago, we tried to get Comcast to come here and let them take it over, but we don't wanna do that. I wonder why? This is your village, people. I don't know, I love it. I've been out here thirty-two years. Reason why I ran for trustee is because I felt there needed to be a change. Only way I could make that change is not by asking this person to get involved. And that's how I got involved. I got involved, and then I saw the money, and I saw the money being used for other things, so I started asking questions. I started asking, well, why are we doing this and doing that? Next thing I know, I said, let me run for office, so I can help make a difference. Let us know what's going on. Tell us, that's why we're here. Tell us what's happening. Do not just let it go by, and then later on say, hey. So right now, when, and it says eight thirty-two, oh, Dr. Lee, this is it.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Burgess. I'll be quick, it's late in the evening. I just wanted to say thank you as superintendent of schools here, because this really helps me to know, because bottom line, District One Sixty-Eight, we stand for kids. We stand for what's in the best interest of our children. And as you can see, you see right now, we got a water cooler. This is how we provide water to the children in our district. We know all of our water pumps are shut down. And so this is a huge issue for us, because we need our children to be safe. We need them to be healthy, we need them to be cared for, because they can't be successful if we as the adults don't put in place processes and procedures to ensure that they are safe. So I appreciate this tremendously. I had talked to trustee Burgess, this is the fourth month in a row here at Rickover, and I said, you know, we want to be in the community. So we'll come back to Rickover at some point, but I said, let's get out, I had a community advisory council meeting, and I didn't have a lot of people show up, but I had one of the ministers in the village show up. And he said, hey, I'd love to host something. So there are people in the community who want to hear and listen and participate. My job is to make sure that all of that is happening to benefit our children. So whatever I can do, I know Bernice there called me and wanted to know about the fire hydrants. We got right on it to make sure I got our buildings around person who went out the next day, he's a fireman, checked all of our hydrants again, had the report ready to go. I know whenever there's a question about what's happening in the school district, don't hesitate. You don't have to wait for our board meeting. You can come to the district's office, you can call me. If you see me in the parking lot, at the subway, at this Dunkin' Donuts, I'm at this Dunkin' Donuts every morning. This Dunkin' Donuts, getting my coffee blackberry ones, Splenda, they own. You got a question, stop and ask, because we cannot succeed as a community if our children don't succeed. And so that's what I'm all about. And so whatever it takes for our village to be the most productive, most successful, because I promise you, five years from now, people are gonna come here to see what's happening in our schools. Bloom Trail's gonna come here and say, what are you all doing? Because your kids are the best. We need your help to make that happen. So whatever I can do, I'm here. Thank you, trustee Burgess. We're gonna keep working together and make it happen.
I just wanna tell you guys that we're fortunate to have Dr. Lee. She comes with a lot of knowledge, she has a lot of connections to help move this district forward. One more last announcement. October twenty-third. October twenty-third, write that on your calendars, the Cedar. Cedar will be at village hall. The not working in the government relations committee is hosting this. It'll be from nine to one for energy assistance program. Qualifications, seniors. Seniors, families that have children six years and under, and handicap. If you have to bring documentation, if anyone needs any flyers, I do have something to call, I don't know why they're bringing them, that's my craziness, but I do have them. But you need to come out. Last year, we had, I think about fifty people. I don't know fifty, I think thirty of them actually qualified and got assistance. You can get it done right then and there. So, you need to bring proof of, a lot of different proof of income and stuff like that, because it is income oriented. But the seniors, you know, I'll put it this way, if you, if you, uh, if you qualify for, uh, free lunch, then you, then you qualify for this, if you have other qualifications. So I just put it that way. So come out for that. I will, as I stated before, let everyone know where we're gonna be. Did everyone like this particular, I think it wasn't attended like we should have, but did everyone like it? I will continue. I'm gonna try to see if we can get, which I'm looking at right now, I'm trying to get to church. If I can get to church to do it, a lot of times churches don't wanna be involved, however, the church is out of cornerstone of this, of the communities. That's what churches are there for. We're not here pushing candidates, we're not here being reluctant, but we're here answering questions. And that's what it is. And I'd love to showcase some of the churches, because I was at one of the churches this weekend, Sunday. Very good reception. About a hundred people at this church, and I told them they should be one of the cornerstone, have a hundred members in that church. That particular time, they said they had over three hundred members. They're very friendly. I have a couple of people that are here, they're from the church. I would love to, this Pastor Pitch Church, right across the parking lot. They're very energetic. You can tell Jesus and God is in that church when you go in there. It is really. But they have an awesome, awesome youth program. So that's something that, you know, and I was hoping Pastor Pitch was here, but today he was. I guess he couldn't get anybody to do Bible class, but these young ladies are here, so they forego Bible studies to be here, and I appreciate that. So, you guys, thank you very much. Next week, mark your calendars. It will be the third Wednesday from seven to eight-thirty. Location will be determined. Thank you so much.